Brian Burns.
Brian Burns.
Yeah, I'm here.
Have your phone muted, please mute your, there we go. All right, we want to welcome you to the Murfreesboro City Council meeting, it's April 30th. Of course, if you're watching this, you're seeing that we're doing this on Zoom. Councilman Shacklet has the prayer and the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to take this opportunity to thank so many people for all the extra effort that they're doing during this difficult time with certainly our first responders, our teachers, our city staff and all the parents and all the citizens in our town have made us persevere during this difficult time. But our faith communities have also done an exceptional job in providing community worship in innovative ways. And I thought this evening for our prayer and pledge, I'd ask my pastor, Dr. John Hinkle from First Presbyterian Church to do our opening prayer and our pledge. So, Dr. Hinkle.
All right, could everyone hear that okay?
I couldn't get the sound, I didn't hear the sound.
That's okay, let's go ahead, we thank Pastor Hinkle for the prayer, let's go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Councilman Shacklet, you'll.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Councilman Shacklet. All right, we're going to move into our consent agenda, you have five items that are on your consent agenda, is there anything that needs to be added or removed from the agenda?
There's none, I'll move for approval.
Second, motion of second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into old business, we have ordinance 18 OZ, we need to rezone approximately 39.9 acres located along Manson Court and Manson Pike. This is second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Have a motion.
I'll second, this is Ronnie.
All right, we have Ronnie with the second.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Stain.
Mr. Martin.
Sorry, aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we're going to move into new business and land use matters. We have ordinance 20 OZ 01, annexation and zoning of approximately 65 acres and 75 acres respectively located along Northwest Broad Street, this is the planning department. Mr. Blomley.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our first item today under our land use matters is for an annexation and zoning. As per usual, we will have the public hearing on the annexation and plan of services. And then after the public hearing on the annexation and plan of services, give a presentation on the zoning request and then there will be a separate public hearing on the zoning request. The property is located near the very northwestern city limits along Northwest Broad Street. It's the rear portion of two parcels that have frontage directly on Northwest Broad Street on its west, excuse me, on its east side. The property kind of wraps around the rear of the North Star Industrial Park, you'll see follow my hand here, see North Star Drive. Singer Road is across the street from the subject property. And there's an industrial plant here along Singer and Northwest Broad that serves Nissan. The applicants or the property owners have requested the annexation of the balance of those two parcels. The frontage of those parcels were annexed, I think in the early to mid 90s, back when we annexed the right of way of Northwest Broad up to this area. They're requesting the annexation of the balance of the properties. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the annexation on November the 1st and recommended the approval of the annexation and the plan of services. The annexation and plan of services does indicate that we can provide services to the subject property. However, considering its position within the city limits and the proposed use adding some denser residential development to the area where most of what's in the city limits in the immediate vicinity is commercial and industrial. Of course, we'll get to the land use in the next zoning item, but although we will be able to provide services, staff has concerns about our ability to provide services in this particular area, especially the rolling services, that this would add some additional burden on those rolling services to serve the proposed development in this particular area. As I mentioned, the planning commission conducted a public hearing and recommended approval on the annexation and the plan of services. I'll be happy to answer any questions either before or after the public hearing.
All right, this is going to be a first for us, I know the planning commission has been doing this, but this will be our first virtual public hearing. So we're going to conduct a public hearing, I would normally say anyone wishing to speak for, yes, we talk to our lectern, but in this case, we have asked people to sign up to speak and, Mr. McKnight, did we have anyone who signed up to speak?
No, Mayor McFarland, no one has signed up to speak on this project.
Okay, so what we will do is we will open a public hearing and then we won't have any comments, but I legally need to open the public hearing, anyone. This is for the plan of services and the annexation, so again, this is just to see if we can serve the property and if we can annex the property, so. All right, anyone wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll call the public hearing, council members, do you have any comments or questions for staff?
I've got a question, do we need to do we need to do this in this order? And what I mean by that is the idea of approving the plan of services, if I've got questions on how that plan of services is going to shake out. You know, I'm trying to figure out a way, can we get both public hearings taken care of today? And, you know, and then come back to have the discussion about the plan of services, or do we, you know, would it just stop with where we are right now? Adam or Craig? Can y'all help me with that?
Neither the the plan of services resolution or the annexation resolution will take effect until the zoning application is, the zoning, the rezoning is approved. So.
I'm trying, my concern is, one of the concerns that I have with this project is about the plan of services. But I don't kind of know where, you know, I don't really know, it's a weird, this is a weird timeline, you know, to do this, because normally the questions come about the zoning.
Right. I mean, I think that has to be the, it would have to, I mean, you're not you're not, you know, obligated to pass or.
All right, don't worry about it, I'll figure it out.
Oh yeah, it's. Councilmember LaLance, you could ask your questions and talk about the plan of services certainly now, even though it's contingent on zoning. There's no harm in talking about plan of services now.
I'll just speak to zoning.
Okay.
All right, any questions for the plan of services? Or the annexation? Councilman Lance, I sort of had that same, I mean, I think we technically can provide services to the area, but I think that's going to be more part of the zoning, in my opinion. So that, I was going to ask those questions in the zoning because we can provide that.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion, I think we close the public hearing, do we have a motion in a second on the plan of services and the annexation?
This is Ronnie, I'll make a motion to approve the plan of services and annexation.
Actually.
All right, we have Councilman Martin and Vice Mayor Scales Harris, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
It's two different resolutions, so I'm calling the roll on the first one, which is the plan of services.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Stain.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
No.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now need to have a motion on the annexation.
I have a question. We don't ever annex anything that's not in the city, do we sometimes? City limits?
You mean not contiguous with the city?
Yes.
State law has recently changed, so where I think there can be non-contiguous annexations. Have to look to Mr. Tucker or to Mr. Ives if he's here for that, but this particular annexation is contiguous with the city limits. In fact, the front portion of both of the parcels that are being requested are already in the city limits.
Right, I noticed that, I just wanted to make sure I was right.
All right, do we have a motion in a second, annexation?
If there are no questions, I'll make the motion to approve the annexation.
I second.
Motion of second, and want to make a clarification that, you know, if it doesn't pass zoning, the plan of services and the annexation are null and void. Ms. Wright, with that, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
No.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move into the public hearing is approximately 78 acres and 65 acres respectively. If you don't have your iPads or phones on mute, if you would, please mute those.
Or unmute them in my case, as I started without pressing mute. Thank you, McFarland, this is the companion zoning request. I'll pull up the map here. This is for the 65 acres that you just considered for annexation, it's in the, I believe my wife would tell me that's coral color at the rear and the frontage, which there is a small portion of zoned light industrial that is in the kind of tan color and then the green color is zoned RS 15. So there would be 13 acres that are already in the city limits that would be rezoned to PUD and then 65 acres that would be zoned PUD simultaneous with annexation. The applicants are requesting the PUD zoning, which is planned unit district. They're proposing a development that includes single-family attached dwellings, single-family detached dwellings and some commercial development along Northwest Broad Street. The commercial is more speculative in nature, they are setting up the parameters for for the commercial development, when it develops, I believe that the applicants have more immediate plans for the single-family detached and single-family attached neighborhood to the rear of the commercial, but they would be setting up commercial zoning along the frontage for future development. The Murfreesboro 2035 Plan recommends that the property develop as urban commercial mixed use and I've got the future land use map, an excerpt from it pulled up on the screen before you. It's in the area that's in the pink color, as you can see, the 2035 Future Land Use Plan shows the area around the future Cherry Lane connector to be urban commercial mixed use. And so here is the proposed Cherry Lane, 840 interchange and then the segment of that roadway going down to Broad Street. That whole pink area is shown in the 2035 Plan to be urban commercial mixed use, which is a rather intense mixed-use land use character with very high residential densities and recommending a broad range of commercial and office uses, a true mixed-use type development where there would be synergy between the residential uses and the and the commercial uses. The subject property or the proposed development, it's it does have commercial and residential uses, but it's staff's opinion that the proposed development is really not consistent with the proposed or with the adopted urban commercial mixed-use designation, which is, which proposes a much more intense type mixed-use development. Much more kind of integrated framework of those commercial and residential uses. And the density of the proposed residential uses are much, much lower than what is recommended in the density of the 2035 Future Land Use Plan. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on November the 1st and then voted to defer action after having some concerns about the proposed design of the development. The applicants worked with staff in the next couple of months to address those concerns and submitted a revised pattern book. And the Planning Commission took up the matter under old business on January the 14th and recommended its approval to the city council as it was revised and resubmitted to the Planning Commission for consideration. Surrounding land uses are primarily along Northwest Broad Street are primarily commercial and industrial. The subject property itself is vacant. As I mentioned, there is an existing industrial facility that serves Nissan across Northwest Broad Street. And there's the North Star Industrial Park directly adjacent to to the subject property. One of the concerns that staff had and the Planning Commission had during its review of this matter was kind of creating some incompatibilities with an existing industrial subdivision, the North Star Industrial Park. So the applicant is proposing a type C buffer along the along the common property line with the existing North Star Industrial Park to attempt to mitigate some of those inherent incompatibilities between industrial and residential uses. But as you can see, the majority of the property along Northwest Broad Street is industrial or commercially zoned or used. There is the Rose Lawn Cemetery and Funeral Home further to the northeast, excuse me, northwest of the subject property. And the city's molking facility and solid waste department is a little bit further to the west along Florence Road. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. Matt Taylor with SCC has a presentation that he would like to make regarding the proposed development.
And Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Blomley, Mayor, Matt Taylor of SCC. I've also got on the call with, or the Zoom meeting with me, Mr. Matt Dowdell and Danny Clausen from D.R. Horton, the applicants on the project, as well as Mr. Rob Mulchen of SCC as well. So we do have a brief presentation to go over the River Landing project, Mr. Blomley will act as my vanna, I believe. And so we'll start with the existing additions, which Matthew went over, Mr. Blomley went over. It's about 78 and a half acres, the entire property, it's outlined here in pink and white. Most of the property is treed with a few pockets of open pasture. The site is along the east or north side of Northwest Broad, about half a mile short of the Florence Road intersection. Found on the east and south side by Overall Creek, which creates some pretty spectacular views, very attractive. We see that as a large amenity for our project. Go to the next one, Matthew. As Mr. Blomley went over, about 400, 450 feet of the front of the property is already in the city limits. It's a zone, a mixture of light industrial, RS 15. And then the remainder is in the county zoned as RM, which is medium density residential. So this picture is looking from Singer Road across Broad Street at our subject property. The next picture is gives you an idea of what that looks like down along Overall Creek, while we think that's such an amenity. And then the next one will be looking along Broad Street, our property would be to the right, so where the trees and the power lines are. Then the plan itself, as Mr. Blomley said, we have requested a PUD zoning so that we can allow this mixture of commercial, single-family attached, the single-family detached. So we propose a total of 379 residential homes. That'll give us a density of about 5.3 units to the acre. And that leaves about seven acres of commercial on the front along Broad Street. Our mix there is about 278 townhomes and 101 single-family detached lots. Those are scattered and mixed throughout the project. We've done that and kept all of our utilities underground and provided about 40% open space throughout the whole project, so we've got a lot of green, a lot of open space, a lot of amenities for our project. The townhomes, those will be sold through an HBR, they will be a for-sale product. D.R. Horton is not a rental company. It is a very walkable community, we have sidewalks along both sides of all of our streets and then our larger open spaces, we've got additional walking trail planned. And then as Mr. Blomley said, we have planned substantial buffers along the commercial industrial areas. All right, next one, Mr. Blomley. One of the things we spent so much time with staff on is the architecture of both the townhomes and the single-family detached homes. And so both the townhouses and the single-family will have the same materials so that they're consistent. It'd be all brick, stone, fiber cement board, the only vinyl will be in the trim or soffit areas. All of these will be two-story homes, single-family detached will start at a minimum of 1,250 square feet and all of those will have two-car garages. We spent a lot of time enhancing these elevations to give the extra detail that staff desired, planning commission desired. We pulled our front porches off, so they're in front of the garage. We've added extra detail on each individual home. Not all the homes will have the same detailing, but it'd be a mixture of corbels, shutters, decorative garage lights, the decorative pieces over the garage doors, so those show a good mixture across those elevations. The townhomes, these you'll see the same materials, there'll also be two stories, these will be one-car garages and start at 1,200 square feet. We spent a good amount of time with staff and planning commission on these elevations as well. On the next one, Mr. Blomley. You see on the front elevations, very attractive, a lot of good roofline movement, a lot of front plane movement, all stone and cement board again. And so we really had a good base, we think, this front elevation didn't change a lot. But as we go to the rear and the sides, each of these will have a private rear patio separated by fences, we've added some decorative roofing material over the door. And on the side is probably where we made the most substantial changes, we added bay windows on each end, we wrapped that water table around, we wrapped the porch and added some windows, really created an attractive end of these units. Go ahead and go to the next one, yeah, and so those are mirror images of each other there. The amenities, D.R. Horton believes in offering a highly amenitized development, so that will start at Broad Street. We know that our development sits back off the road because of the commercial development, and so we're going to start with some well-designated monument signage. And then as we move into the site, the first thing we'll touch on are the potential kayak or boat launches, not full-size boats, but canoes. We want to take advantage of Overall Creek. Into the development toward the rear will be a pavilion for gathering spaces. And then back toward the front of the project will be a pool and pool house, this will be one of the early amenities that D.R. Horton constructs, they see this as a selling feature to the neighborhood. And then lastly, we have planned for three playgrounds throughout, all of these are very walkable, very convenient to each homeowner. You can see it's a very amenitized property. The commercial, D.R. Horton is not a commercial developer, but we know the recommendations were for mixed use, staff and planning commission both asked for mixed use, so we planned the entire frontage along Broad Street in commercial. We have set forth the building materials as well as the uses, we based those uses on commercial fringe as a starting point and then paired it back from there. And so we have as much interest in seeing that commercial complement our neighborhood and not detract, we've got a huge investment back here. So we've got a lot of interest in how that develops. And then we've got, we have proposed two access points that we can fulfill right now, both of those will be on Broad Street. We see the main access and the first one we'll build will align with Singer Road. There, we'll construct a full complement of turn lanes as well as install a traffic signal. We've already completed our traffic study, that study says a signal is needed today, and so we would complete that with our project. These other access point on the Broad Street is back toward town, that would also have a full complement of turn lanes. And in the future, we are providing the opportunity for a bridge over Overall Creek to be constructed, we'll dedicate right of way and allow that opportunity, that way there's a connection back to the future Cherry Lane extension that is back toward town. And then please just highlight the buffers, you can see the in red what we plan to construct. The commercial out parcels would construct their out parcel of those buffers as they develop. And then the one along the rear of the townhouses abutting the industrial, we would do as we develop. And then on the very rear of the property where we abut the Journey Pier project, we'll construct a fence back there, she was actually the only Journey Pier was the only one that talked at the planning commission public hearing and it was really not negative toward our project, it was more about a concern of people leaving their facility and coming onto our site. So we're going to construct a fence back there. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing. And then as well, Mr. Clausen has a few statements he would like to make about the project. If you can let him talk for just a second.
Mr. Clausen?
Yeah. You got me? Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you all for your time. I would like to, really, the kind of planning services kind of threw me for a little bit this afternoon. So I'm looking forward to having that discussion with you guys and just kind of seeing how we can move forward on that. Normally, that's not something that would take effect at this late in the game. From my understanding, Solid Waste Department's about a third of a mile from this site. And we are willing to go private if we need to on that to help out. I mean, our base are already controlling that area. You know, we're a mile, almost a mile into the city limits here. And we've got a fire station about two miles from this site. So so again, respectfully, this, I'd like to be able to hear what you have to say on that later. So looking forward to that and seeing how we can move forward. The the mixed-use development that we are planning here, we think that it does meet within the twenty thirty-five land use plan from working with planning commission on that. And it's actually like Mr. Blomley said, it's a little lower density. So that hopefully helps on some of these services. But what we do, D R Horton, we're on our third community in Murfreesboro. We love Murfreesboro. We do. It's a great, great neighborhood, great community. We like doing highly amenitized communities. The communities that we have been able to do here in Murfreesboro have not been a true representation of what we do. Just because they've been, we've been taking over communities that were dormant through the downer. And we've got them back up and enclosed. But we like, we like high amenities. So we like water features. We like the sense of arrival when you come into our communities. We want customers and our homeowners to have a sense of arrival and a pride of ownership when they come in. So it's going to look really attractive coming in on Northwest Broad there. Pools are nice pools, nice playgrounds. Again, the walking trails, I mean, how how great is it going to be for for you to get off of work and have dinner and have your kids and then go take a nice stroll down Overall Creek and West Fork River, so West, the West Fork of the Stone River? Something that I think is just going to be very nice in Murfreesboro. I'm really looking forward to seeing that. Like Matt said, I want to thank planning commission for helping us work through our our product. I think we're going to be able to deliver a very attractive product out there. We have taken, you know, our our front porches and moved them out in front of the front facade. We've added metal roof accents, corbels, insulated groves, doors, carriage doors, something that's going to be a lot more attractive than just your regular door that you see out there. Also on our on our townhomes, I mean, we wrapped patios, we brought out boxout windows, wainscot of stone. And it's just going to be really, really attractive. So looking forward to that. And then our price point, that's something that I think is going to be really attractive to the area. We spent some time today on real tracks. I wanted to see what the median home sales price in Murfreesboro is. So for two thousand nineteen, all all sales, so existing and new, we're at a median of two eighty there in Murfreesboro. And if you just look at two thousand ten to two thousand nineteen, we're at a three hundred and nine thousand dollar median. That and that's out of out of real tracks. So what we're going to be able to offer is townhomes starting in the two forties, which is well below that median. And then single families starting in the two seventies. So you know, with the numbers that we pulled out of real tracks, I mean, it just shows a trend that we're pulling away from affordability and pulling away from entry-level housing. And I think all of middle Tennessee needs more of that. So I know something that's really close to you guys also is homeownership versus rent. And I just want to assure you guys that we are not a built-to-rent community here. This is not what we do. We're not your American Homes for any or any of those guys like that. So we we sell to homeownership. We understand that a certain percentage of those are going to be investment. I do not do any bulk investment sales. Just don't do it. So I just wanted to assure you all there that we do believe in homeownership, just like you guys do. So and then we will bring, you know, the much-needed safety improvements out there. I mean, I know City of Laverne, back in February, lost one of their employees right there in front of this site. And that traffic signal is warranted today. And that's something that this development can bring there. You know, we're going to button turn lanes. We're going to bring in diesel lanes. I don't think we can ignore the safety issue there that that this project can bring and can fix with our community. And and one of the, and I mean, well, that's a big thing, safety. But you know, this is going to be one of the newest and the nicest developments coming in from this side of town. So I think it's going to offer a really attractive view coming into Murfreesboro. I think it's going to be welcoming to people coming in from this side of town. So so I'm looking forward to it. Hopefully, we can work through it. We're eight, nine, ten months now into this deal. So so for us to be this deep into here and plan that, we've got planning services, a little concerning. But I'd love to hear what you have to say. And thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. I'll, Mr. McKnight, do we have anyone that signed up for this public?
Mayor, we have no one signed up at this time.
Okay. I don't see anyone on wishing to speak, but I'll open the public hearing for anyone virtually to speak. All right. So you know, we'll close the public hearing and we'll now consider this rezoning request.
Mayor, hey, this is Ronnie. I'll I'll kick us off if that's okay. Just want to talk through a little bit of this. This plan obviously has evolved quite a bit since it was originally brought to planning. You know, I think, and it's been a while, but if memory serves me, obviously, the the commercial frontage was significantly less in the original draft of the plan. It was mostly residential at that particular point. And based on presentation and the long-range plan, land use plan, and the high-density mixed use that that was intended to be, we had a lot of discussion about, you know, that it needed to have a more mixed-use feel than it did. So there are a lot of discussions surrounding sticking to that. And I appreciate the developer making those concessions and being willing to do that because I think that it it made me feel more comfortable based on what we were looking at. In addition to that, there was a recommendation, if you look at the original plan, there was a long street in the middle of that, that there was a lot of concern about traffic and speed there. There was a redesign of that that was done in order to sort of accommodate some of the concerns that we had. I appreciated that. And I think it was a much better plan after the redraw. There were also some comments from the adjacent landowner related to concerns about development. The back, I think, the one of the Journey Pure sites is in the back of that. And staff can help me with that. Again, it's been a long time. But I think there were some concessions made there as well as with some of the elevations and the design. So from the standpoint of the developer being cooperative to being willing to make changes that we asked for and especially that, to the best of our knowledge, really fit the land use plan that we had available and the knowledge we had. I felt very good about the plan. One of the things that does concern me, and I'm not pointing fingers at staff on this. It may be my memory that's failing as much as anything. But I don't remember the concern over the rolling services. So it would help me to know a little more about that specifically on what our concerns are related to that.
Mr. Blomley or Mr. McKnight, would you like to answer those questions on, or Mr. Huddleston, I know you're on here, but what some of the questions on staff services would be?
Mayor McFarland, I think our our concern is is relative to the fact that this development will draw our services out a little bit farther than they already are in a different way than they already are. There's, there is, there are three hundred and some odd homes proposed. And those, those homes will will create a demand that is not currently there for those for the property that's out Northwest Broad Street. And while, you know, I mentioned in the in the presentation that our plan of services indicates that we can serve it, we still have concerns about about the impact that it will have on our on our services. And someone else on staff may wish to elaborate a little bit about those concerns.
Mr. Whitaker, do you have a, Mr. Whitaker, do you have some comments?
Mayor, I spoke with the fire chief this afternoon. And if we dispatch fire rescue, they have to actually dispatch two units. One will come from Florence Road, the other would come from Thompson. The reason for that is we can't always count on there not being a train on that track. So if that train's there, it blocks, even though Florence Station's two miles away, then we have to come from Thompson, which is fine. So they'll actually have to dispatch both because they won't know if that rail line is blocked or not till they get there. So that is kind of problematic for us. Now, eventually, when Cherry Lane's built and we have more growth in this area, we would look at putting a new fire station on Cherry Lane. But that's going to be some ways out. So now we'd actually have to dispatch two engine companies, one Florence, the other one backup from Thompson.
Gary, is the 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 developer mentioned something about the solid waste department being a mile away? Does that have to do anything with taking trash somewhere? That isn't that, that's not where we take trash, is it?
No. In fact, we still load it, we load it on the truck. And it still has to go currently today, has to go out two thirty-one to the landfill. Now, that's pretty, pretty good trek from that. And as Mr. Blomley said, it does stretch our services. We do patrol out there. But the frequency and the number of units and high density is not there today. Eventually, we all know that more than likely that there will be commercial development in that area sometime in the future when the property owners decide to sell. At that time, you will have, I would assume, we, that's a gateway to our city. So we would look to have hotels, restaurants, commercial development. And naturally, as that development increases, by that time, though, we should have Cherry Lane done. And we would probably be looking to build a new fire station up in that direct, in that area.
How many, how many houses about are there at like that Liberty Station, Liberty Valley out there? Does anybody, anybody know about how big that development is? I'm just kind of curious as to my next comment. Do you know, Gary, anybody?
I don't. Mr. Blomley?
I I don't know, but we have the engineer of record on the on the line with us.
Well, I guess, I guess I really don't have to know. My my point was just going to be, you know, we got to kind of think about these things. And, you know, I understand the developer's comments that, you know, he he seems a little perturbed that we might have some questions about this after he's been in the process for nine months. You know, we've been in the process for for all about eight weeks and and seven and a half weeks of those. We've been pretty busy with other stuff. So this is our time to ask questions and to have, you know, to to get some of this stuff out on the table. I hope you'll forgive us for that. But, you know, my, you know, what what I think of, one of the things that I think of when I think about things coming from, you know, being stretching our services and stuff like that, one of the comments that I was going to make in the the original public hearing was, if we'll think about the number of comments that we get from the Liberty Valley and Liberty Station subdivision, you know, how often are we able to have police officers out there to deal with that speeding problem on a little strip road that happens to be about three miles out or so from the next closest place that we really deal with very often that has a residential presence? And we get a lot of questions about that. And it's very difficult seemingly for us to 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 man that area with police officers. So that was sort of part of my concern with 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 the the plan of services. Now, you know, I I will go on to kind of say, I I, you know, look, I I actually, based on how I look at these things, which you guys know may be different from how other folks may look at it sometimes, the fact that there's not a lot of density out in that area already leads me to be more favorable towards the possibility of something like this happening. So to me, you know, there's not already a whole bunch of multifamily, high-density residential property right there beside it. So that's actually a positive for me. The one thing that I've got a concern with that I want to try to work through, and I I would think it would just be kind of more fair, I don't, I don't, I I actually, because this is kind of new, that that I don't think that the the developers would have any time, have had any time to deal with this, would be the the bridge stub that goes out over the creek. In my mind, in order to get a density that's forty or fifty percent higher than where our sewer allocation says we need to be as a city and to deal with the issues that we're going to have from a service, plan of service standpoint, you know, the stub out is great, but who's going to build the bridge really keeps bothering me in the back of my mind. You know, we we've been dealing with this over the last three to six months, a lot, as far as the need for bridges over creeks and rivers. And stubbing it out's one thing, but taking another step to try to work towards, how are we going to, how are we going to make sure that we got another way out of that neighborhood other than just Broad Street? When we talk about connectivity, that doesn't have it unless you build a bridge over the creek. So, you know, having two entrances right to the same exact street doesn't really qualify for having connectivity and 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 extra ingress and egress, I don't think. So if there's, you know, I I'm still willing, I don't want to just say there's no way that I would support this. I'd love to try to still work with it. But in order to get the higher density and to deal with those issues, I think for me, the the bridge situation either has to get kind of figured out. Otherwise, I'm kind of more on the line of saying, well, this, if this is more like a typical density for what our sewer allocation would allow, then then I might be able to support it on that level as well. So just throwing all that out there, and I apologize, this is all kind of weird trying to do this on a screen, but I'm doing the best I can.
Hey, Gary, this is Kurt. Is there any other commercial properties around this, this property that they're trying to develop?
Yes, in fact, just adjacent to this property. It's basically a tire-changing, and I brought it up. I did actually meet with the developer and voiced my concerns because as Mr. Blomley had said earlier, you know, heavy industrial and and residential are incompatible uses. And I did bring up my concerns about the noise because everybody knows when you're changing truck tires, how loud that air equipment. I don't know their hours of operation, but I do know that that sound carries, especially out in rural areas like that. And I did, I voiced a concern over moving people in adjacent to a large truck tire facility where that's what they do all day long is is change, change up truck tires with air, air ratchets and whatever.
Thank you.
This is Matt. Can I talk?
Sure, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Whitaker, right, we met and he expressed some concern. We took those concerns very seriously because, you know, we've got neighbors that are residents are going to move in. And it's this is a huge investment for us. It's not just a, it's not just a paper decision. We're going to be here for many years. And so obviously, if we make the wrong decision, we're stuck with it. And so my client actually went out after that meeting with Gary, Mr. Whitaker, and talked to the people that run that business, talked to them about their hours of operation. They're an eight-to-five operation. He sat there and he listened for the noise concerns. And he's comfortable with the lack of noise that he is hearing come out, uh, from that building toward the street, which would be, um, closer than what our residents would be. Um, our development is, um, also, um, following similar buffering guidelines is what we've, um, implemented previously around the city where we do have some industrial versus residential. We, uh, we think that we have an advantage to that because our people, uh, can have the opportunity to see what's there today, uh, prior to moving in. To Councilman LaLance's, uh, discussions about the bridge, uh, we're happy to take a look at that with staff. Uh, we're also happy to, uh, talk about, um, the other rolling services, um, that we've not really had an opportunity to try to come up with a solution, um, on that. But we would, uh, very much appreciate the opportunity to sit down with staff and try to work through some of those concerns and see if there's anything that we can do, uh, to reach that.
I, I know this is, this is always, you know, uh, part of these meetings is always trying to kind of get a feeling for where everybody is on things and not, and I don't, I don't want to, uh, I'm just, so, and this is difficult in this situation, but I'll just kind of lay it out here for you. You know, the first and last conversation I had about this was two months ago up until yesterday. Um, and there's been a whole lot going on. And so, um, you know, I, I'll be honest with you. I wouldn't mind a little more time to dig in a little bit more on the school buses, the, the, the difficulty of the fire department, the, the police, uh, the police department. Um, so just from a standpoint of where I am right now, I, I'd prefer to ask to defer this, um, but I, you know, you guys, if, if, if everybody else wants to do something different, that's okay. I just, I, I'd, I'd kind of like to defer it and get my hands around some of this other stuff and maybe let them work on this bridge idea. That's just where I am, guys. So whatever, whatever y'all want to do from here.
And, and this is Ronnie. I'd be in support of that as well. One thing, and this may be my inexperience, uh, that I am curious about. Uh, I, I do think when we have the opportunity in the plan of services to say we have concerns about providing services, we should say that. Um, and if we feel like that we can provide services, I'm not sure that we should be arguing that we can't provide services if we're saying it in the plan of services. Now, maybe that's my inexperience, but I didn't see anything in the plan of services that said we couldn't, we couldn't provide rolling services to the community.
Yeah, I think, uh, one of the things that I've talked about a lot in the past is to try, there's a fiscal node attached to, to those, uh, plan of services things. And, and we've, we've not found a very good way, in my opinion, to attach sort of a grade on what that means. I mean, could we, could we actually get a fire truck to, you know, um, decent down Shelbyville Highway? Yes, we can provide services there, but does that mean it makes sense to provide those services, the best thing for Murfreesboro? I don't know that we have a real good system in place to, that, that sort of separates the difference of can we provide services to, is it smart to provide services? And, and I, I, I think that goes to your point. Um, but, um, I, I suspect that's something that I, I mean, I would love for us to work on that going forward. And that's nothing to do, that doesn't, that's not the developer's problem. That's just a situation that we're sitting here with today.
Question may be for Mr. Tucker. Mr. Tucker, for the state law, I, I, the annexation or in plan of services, I think going to what Councilman LaLance says, I think it just means that we do have services that could be provided or that we've got six months that we have to provide those, not necessarily whether it would be a prudent decision or not. Is that, that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I tell you all where I am on this. You, you know, we had a discussion with a developer, I think, Mr. Ten, or Mr. Tyndall and Mr. Whitaker were in on this conversation. This was several months ago. I just think we have to be smart on where we put development and density on our city limits. Uh, and I'm not sharing anything, um, I hadn't shared with the applicant when we sat. I just, I think putting density at the edge of our city limits is just not smart. Um, I think that's why if you, you really look at Broad Street and you, I tried to go back, go and look and there's no residential anywhere on Broad Street besides, you know, the Crispin Motel and some of those multifamily units. But you have to go across Mercury Boulevard, down Broad Street towards Manchester to, before you can find, before you can find residential. And I think, you know, in my opinion, there's a reason why that that was done. And that's because that corridor was predominantly designed to be res, or excuse me, designed to be either industrial or, um, not light industrial or commercial. And, uh, that's why I just think this is probably inconsistent with, with what is on the rest of Broad Street. So, um, and that, I mean, not, granted, I know what the developer had said about there being a, a red light put there. I think that is, that is beneficial, but man, I know the discussions that we had with one applicant that was looking to go there, even if it's a commercial development that goes there, there's going to have to be signalization at that intersection or that development regardless whether it's, it's residential or, or, uh, commercial. So that, that's sort of where I, I stand on it.
Guys, I've, I've been pretty much outspoken on that particular project, uh, for 18 months now. And when it came before the planning commission, uh, it was, I, I made it very clear that I felt that this was just the wrong place and the wrong time. Uh, the property's completely surrounded by industrial property almost, except with Riverside. Uh, the, uh, uses of the property would never be approved as a place to change tires just feet away from where homes are being built. So, so if this were in the reverse order, we would never approve what, what is being asked for. It's just the other direction. Um, having driven that roadway for 18 and a half years, uh, many years ago, uh, that is a heavily traveled stretch of that highway. And, uh, for anybody who assumes that adding another red light to that roadway, it may benefit the neighborhood and it may benefit the few people who come off Singer Road who have the opportunity of not coming off Singer Road and going down to where there is a signalized intersection if they would like to. But the, the addition of another red light into that neighborhood that would, and, and I'll say there's two people at each home. I don't know if that's a fair number or not. But, uh, if there is, and, and they're driving their vehicles coming in and out of that neighborhood, that's about 600 people in the morning and 600 people in the evening coming in and out across Broad Street. That is not going to improve the safety of that intersection. Uh, that's going to make matters worse as far as us being able to provide services, uh, from, if, if they come and, and it's not uncommon at all to see that intersection at Singer Road blocked by a train. If, if that's blocked at seven o'clock in the morning and they've got to come five miles from Thompson Lane with a fire truck, it just does not make sense to think that a fire truck coming through a F-rated intersection at Broad and Thompson is a good idea. At, uh, the, uh, the, 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 the timing of this could not be worse. Uh, because 18 years down the road from now, if this is developed as a gateway area, it may be a completely different scenario, but, uh, currently, uh, it does not make sense. At that point, I would think if somebody was going to develop that property for residential property, that they would be required to put the bridge in. As most of you know, I, uh, or some of you may remember, I voted against overall Creek School many years ago. And, and the reason was, was because there needed to be a bridge connecting it to Savannah Ridge. I think it's the name of the neighborhood right behind it. And, and, and the process, I, I was opposed to it because in order for that to work well, there needed to be a bridge connecting the neighborhood to the school. And ultimately the taxpayers is who wound up paying for that bridge because the developer didn't pay for it. And the school project didn't include it. So the taxpayers paid for it. So, so there's, there's so many reasons that, that this project is not a good idea. Uh, I just, uh, I, I struggle with, um, why we would believe that putting this type of project that far from where we currently have services, unless we just want to build another fire station for this neighborhood and that's another $9 million. It, uh, I, I just don't think that this is, this is a good road to go down. Now, it, as, and most of you know, I, at one time served on the MBD power board. And at that time I suggested MBD go out there when they were looking for a corporate headquarters site. Cause this would have been an ideal location for a pole farm and, and, and a headquarters up next to the roadway and, and, uh, access to different areas of Murfreesboro and, uh, because it's got great access to 840, uh, once you get out on the Broad Street. But, uh, it's just, it, it's, the, the timing's not right. Uh, the project, uh, has evolved tremendously and I, and I take my hat off to the developer and, and SEC on, uh, the job that they've done of trying to meet many other requests that, uh, planning commission as well as council has expressed. But, uh, the, uh, the project, uh, it just, it, it doesn't feel right. And, uh, so as, as you can tell by my comments, I'll be a note.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Were all of these, um, concerns and comments brought up in the planning meeting? And have the developers answered all of the questions or concerns that the, um, planning commission had about this project? I'm just trying to see.
Matt, I, I was in those meetings, so I'll answer that question and, and so was, uh, Ronnie. But, uh, to, to answer your question, I have from the very beginning expressed these concerns. So these aren't concerns that I've developed over the last couple of days. Uh, this has been ongoing. And, uh, I, I really do think that this property, uh, would be a great project for somebody to develop, but I just don't think it would be a great residential project. And, uh, the, uh, at, at this time, now as time passes, situations change and things change. But at this time, uh, with our services not, and, and as Gary said, if Cherry Lane were already built and we had a fire station already going out there because of the neighborhoods that were out there and it were going out there in conjunction with those neighborhoods, that would be a completely different scenario. But that's not the case. We're just, you know, dealing with the cars that were dealt today and, and that's, um, and, and, you know, things like fences and setbacks and buffers, they have addressed those. And, uh, the, the original plan had the roadway going straight through the neighborhood from front to the back and it was no brakes in it. And, and they broke that up to slow traffic down coming in and out of the neighborhood. But, uh, so, so they've made some dramatic changes. They really have. Uh, but, uh, it still doesn't change the ability for the city to provide services to it. And, and of course, as Shane pointed out, the, the question is can we provide services? And if the answer is yes to that, we can provide services. Now the question is can we provide quality services without having to spend a whole lot of money? And when I say having to spend, I'm talking about the taxpayers and the citizens of Murfreesboro. I think it would be cost prohibitive, uh, to justify how we should put this burden on our citizens, uh, that would be placed on, uh, our utilities and our, not utilities, but the, the services that we do provide. I think it would be a stretch to put it on to them and say, okay, this is going to justify the revenue that will be generated from property taxes and sales taxes off this population. It would never do that. So that's kind of where I am. Hey Mayor, I think we all got some concerns about this project. I, I'm with Rick. I think at this point in time, uh, I'd like to make a motion to defer this, uh, until we can get some of these issues straightened out with staff with the plan of services.
Second. All right, we have a motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
That's Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Mr. Way?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, this project is deferred. All right, we will move to ordinance 20 OZ 02 to rezone approximately 0.89 acres along the north side of Bradyville Pike, west of Minerva Drive. This is the planning department. Ms. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. I'm going to scroll down to the property here. Bear with me just a moment.
Mr. Blomley, this reminds me probably like how you have to wait on Auburn to score a touchdown.
That's, yeah, it's not basketball season anymore. So I don't have any snappy comebacks. I was sad that we didn't get, go back to the final four this year. Thank you for your patience. Um, our next request is a zoning request along the north side of Bradyville Pike, just to the west of the Minerva Drive intersection. Uh, it's two parcels that are, that, uh, currently have single-family dwellings on them. It's, uh, in the, uh, red color before you tonight on the map. The applicant is requesting to rezone those properties from RS 10 to PCD, planned commercial development. And he would like to develop a multi-tenant retail building on that property. As I mentioned, the property is currently zoned RS 10. Uh, there are two single-family dwellings on them. It's kind of adjacent to a small commercial node at the intersection of Minerva Drive and Bradyville Pike. The, to the north of the subject property are single-family homes along Cypress Drive. And there are several single-family homes to the west as well along Bradyville Pike. But as you can see on the aerial photograph before you, at the intersection of Minerva and Bradyville, there are, um, there are a number of commercial uses, including a multi-tenant, um, commercial building directly to the east of the subject property at the corner, as well as across the street, there's a laundromat and a, a market and an automobile repair facility. And there are additional commercial uses further to the, to the east along Bradyville Pike. The commercial areas right now are zoned, a kind of an assortment of commercial, local, commercial fringe and planned commercial district. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this rezoning request in January and, uh, voted to recommend its approval. Just real quick, before Mr. Roundtree gets up to give his presentation, I suppose he's probably not going to get up. You can see the, uh, future land use map of the Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan recommends for these parcels, uh, suburban residential as the, the appropriate land use character. But as you can see, it's directly adjacent to the neighborhood commercial node. Um, that is, you see the neighborhood commercial label at the intersection of Minerva and Bradyville. And one way to look at, um, future land use maps are that they're not parcel specific. I think the lines, the boundaries of the future land use map have to wind up somewhere. And so, you know, it makes it convenient to look at them as a, in a parcel specific way. But, uh, one of the things that the council will be tasked with doing tonight is determining whether or not, um, it would be appropriate to kind of extend that neighborhood commercial node that is directly adjacent to these two parcels. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. And now, um, unless there are any questions for me, I'll invite Mr. Roundtree to give his presentation and it'll take me a moment to pull that up. That's pulled up whenever Mr. Roundtree is ready.
All right, Mayor, council members, my name is Clyde Roundtree with Holson Steel Engineering. And I am representing our client, Mr. Ken Yasubuda, who is the developer on this particular project. He owns the two single-family homes that would be taken down in order to put in this commercial strip center for like better term. As mentioned by Matthew, uh, is an RS 10 site currently, it is adjacent to a commercial local, uh, site. And, um, and we have a few images of that. We'll talk about that a little bit later, but it's kind of a, a challenging, uh, neighbor as far as the commercial development on the corner. That's on the corner of Minerva and Bradyville Pike. Uh, services are coming on along Bradyville Pike and, uh, the, the site is typically a pretty flat site for the most part. There's a little roll down from Bradyville that goes down to the site, but nothing significant. All the drainage goes towards that back right corner. And, um, so with that in mind, sorry Matthew, going fast, are we? Um, just go ahead, Matthew, and go to the aerial photograph. That kind of tells the story a little bit there. Uh, as you can see, that building that is adjacent to us on the eastern side is, uh, kind of a conglomeration of a lot of different additions. And, um, it's, I think there's some successful business going on in there, but it's just kind of a, it's not a really, uh, attractive building at all. So Mr. Ken, who is our client, would really So Mr. Ken, who is our client, would really like to do something nice to kind of set the tone for the neighborhood. As Matthew mentioned, across the street is a laundromat and a grocery store, kind of a, kind of a grocery store oriented towards a certain type of community that lives out in that area. And then there's an auto repair shop that's basically further to the west across Bradyville as well. And that's, that's an attractive building. So this is an opportunity for Mr. Ken to provide something nice for the community, to really hopefully get the ball rolling in the commercial side that can really kind of enhance and encourage that development, you know, at the intersection of Minerva and Bradyville. And so with that in mind, go ahead, Matthew, and flip to the site. Well, let me ask you a few things real quick. Back up the existing conditions, the two photos, one more back. Yeah, I just want to show you, basically the bottom right hand corner, those two photos are really looking at that intersection at Minerva and Bradyville. So it's, there's a lot going on there. I think we'd be stepping in the right direction by doing the development we're proposing. There is an apartment complex kind of catty corner to the rear of this, of this building. And the two single family homes that are shown, those images are kind of typical for the properties along Bradyville, real close to this subject property. Go ahead, next slide, Matthew, please. And that center slide, the center, the center picture shows the actual two homes that would be taken down as a result of this project. And then the one on the right, top right hand side is a home that's about three doors down from this one. So I, I venture to say there is a church that's on the same block towards the west. And if this project goes forward, I, I see basically a long Bradyville become a commercial, a commercial services that are related to that local neighborhood. It is kind of an ethnic oriented community. And so a lot of the businesses really cater towards that ethnicity. So with that in mind, go ahead to the site plan, Matthew. We are proposing approximately a little over seven thousand square foot building. And the site accommodates it well. We can park it adequately. We have thirty-two or thirty-five spaces plus two handicap spaces. And really thirty-two are required. We're able to get our formal open space accommodated and that's on the, basically the western side of the site. And it's Mr. Ken's hope that that would be some kind of restaurant. There's a restaurant in the adjacent building that's really well known. I've never been there, but it's done well. He would love to see that, that person come over to this particular building and hopefully find a new home. And so with that in mind, there's a mail kiosk and I apologize on the drawing. I think it may, yours may be more accurate, that mail kiosk got floated, but it's on the right hand side of the entrance drive. There will be a street sign that's in the center of the property. And the dumpster, we had to work through a little bit, but it is on the eastern side of the property. That's really up against the commercial. That was really kind of where we moved it to, through the design process. And also we did a kind of perimeter walkway around the back for services as well. Real attractive building. Go ahead, Matthew, hit the building if you would. We're happy with the architecture, did a lot of work on this one in terms of trying to make it kind of a statement project for the neighborhood. As most of our architecture is coming through Murfreesboro, it's all masonry, tones of brick, we some ethos, but it'll really be on the cornices and kind of, you know, the top portion of the roof that adds the detail, multiple roof lines. And really we're probably catering towards, you know, five tenants. It's really kind of an open, open canvas when you're inside the building, but really the design of it really accommodates more of a five tenant kind of scenario. We did do some work on the parapet walls to make sure that they screen the AC units from any kind of public ride of way. Made sure that the edges of the buildings, you know, were articulated so it didn't look like we just fell off, you know, once we got past the front facade. And then the rear is all masonry as well. And there'll be some access doors, but that's primarily the only activity on the rear of the building. So with that in mind, that's, that's the overview of the architecture. There's a perspective that shows you kind of how that formal open space may be used if that becomes a restaurant on the corner, which would be really nice. And then we'll have awnings and, you know, different kind of architectural details between awnings and lights that, that really kind of bring a sense of scale to the building. Foundation planting, of course, will be a part of the mix. And with this slide, we're all providing buffers along the northern side and the western side, which are really the residential component sides. Just perimeter planting around along the commercial side and then streetscape along Bradyville Pike. And then screening out the parking with the shrubbery to make sure that the parking will be, the negative impact of parking be minimized from Bradyville Pike. And then lastly, just a little bit more on the formal open space. Right now, we're anticipating to be an aggregate patio with benches and trashcans. As was seen with that picture, it becomes a restaurant more likely. There'll be some umbrella tables associated with the project. And then we had two entrances at one point and it got a little complicated with the egress from the adjacent property. Those exit points were a little bit too tied in. We had to cross over the way the median starts divided at that point. So we have one primary access point. We did line it up with the commercial property across the street. And all things considered, we're, we feel good about the scale of the project and relationship to the site. We're able to preserve, you know, the proper amount of green space, accommodate our formal open space, accommodate our parking requirements and, and really providing an attractive building to a community that really could, not to say it needs tons of revitalization, but this will definitely be a positive for that neighborhood. And, and our client's excited about actually bringing something forward that, that could be a good investment property for him long term, but also something that really just accentuates the neighborhood. So with that in mind, I hope for any questions.
Mr. McNight or Mr. Blomley, do we have anyone sign up to speak at the public hearing on this?
Never a problem. We didn't have anyone to sign up to speak for or against this project.
All right. All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing. All right, now I'm going to legally close the public hearing. All right, and counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Roundtree or staff? I want to say great opportunity for redevelopment.
There's no questions, I move for approval.
And I, I don't say, but, but at the same time, I want to say what a tremendous asset this will be to that area. Clyde's right, there's one of the best Thai places for, for Thai in Murfreesboro located just adjacent to this property. But there's been very little development in the Bradyville Pike in Minerva area in quite some time, although it's a commercial district. And it really makes sense. You may have noticed on these plans that there was no sidewalk in front of that property and that was discussed at the Planning Commission. But the reason that's acceptable is because of the development of Bradyville Pike coming in the near future will justify or, or actually put that sidewalk in place. But there's, it, it currently doesn't make sense because it, it may be a moving target as to where that roadway actually winds up. So, so that'll be taking place in the near future. It'll be a more walkable location in that neighborhood when Bradyville Pike gets improved. And it, it will be a real amenity to that area. So I second the motion.
All right, Ms. Wright, we have a motion second. Please call the roll.
That's Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Way.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move into ordinance twenty O Z zero three to rezone approximately point seven one acres located along the south side of East Vine Street, east of South Highland Avenue. All right, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. And what do you know, I'm unmuted and I have the, the exhibit on the right page. So our next public hearing is for property that is currently zoned RS eight along East Vine Street. It's in the purple shade on the map before you. Mr. Brian Burns is requesting to rezone that property from RS eight to PRD for a planned residential development called East Vine Villas, which will be a six unit, single family attached development with townhome style homes. Give you a little bit of idea of the surrounding zoning and land uses. It's, it's a hot, in the downtown area, there's a hodgepodge of zoning districts and, and residential uses. This property is just outside of the historic zoning district. The historic zoning district is just to the north of the subject property. As you can see, in this block of East Vine Street along the south side is zoned RS eight. There's an existing single family home on this property and there's a single family home directly to the east. Property directly to the west is currently vacant and undeveloped, no structures on it. There are some single family homes to the south and some multifamily uses to the south as well. It's currently zoned RM sixteen. And some of those lots are non-conforming lots. As you can see, they're very, very tiny lots. And as with much of the downtown, it was developed before our current zoning regulations went into effect. The applicant is requesting a PRD zoning district. And I'm gonna scroll back up now and show you how that compares to our twenty thirty five future land use map. Our twenty thirty five future land use map recommends that the property develop as the suburban residential land use character. Not really certain what the thought process was with regards to the suburban residential in this area, which is a very urban part of town. It would appear that the general residential land use character, which is located just to the north of the subject property, would probably be more appropriate for this property as well. The suburban residential allows for a maximum density of three point five or three point six dwelling units per acre, while the general residential allows for a density of up to eight point six dwelling units per acre. The, the property is not impacted by the sewer allocation ordinance because it is located in the city core overlay district. And the city core overlay district is exempt from the sanitary sewer allocation ordinance. Because the primary reason because it, for that is because we want to try to focus density near the core of the city, near the town. And so we wanted to make sure that those limitations weren't in place for the city core overlay district. With that being said, Mr. Claude Roundtree has a presentation that he would like to give regarding this. I neglected to mention, the Planning Commission did not a public hearing on this at its January the eighth meeting and voted to recommend approval. Unless there are any questions for me, I will flip over to Mr. Roundtree's presentation.
Thank you, Matthew. Again, Clyde Roundtree, Holson Steel Engineering. Thank you, Mayor, council members. I am representing Mr. Brian Burns, who up to this point spent on the Zoom conversation. So he'll probably jump back in if we need to talk to him directly. As Matthew mentioned, you know, we are doing a plan development that was encouraged by the staff and we are asking for a little bit of increased density, obviously, over the suburban residential. But as Matthew mentioned, a little bit over what would be considered the general residential in the twenty thirty five plan. There's gonna be a planned residential of the district request. As far as services, which is next slide, Matthew, all the services will be coming off of Vine Street. So more than adequate services easily available, readily available for us. Let's see, all right. Is that gonna hold us up, Matthew, I think?
I'm gonna X out of the, apparently my Adobe Acrobat is having some issues. I'm gonna X out of this PDF and bring it right back up.
Sure. Thank you, Matthew. Last scene, as Matthew mentioned on the aerial photo, there is a kind of a conglomerate of different types of uses around this, mostly residential. There are a few commercial buildings down the street on East Vine that are kind of residential in scale. There are duplexes, single family homes. A lot of the single family homes in this particular area are rental. And I think, but Mr. Burns' intending is really honorable in terms of he wants to be a part of the CCO infill type of community and, and bring quality products into this residential area. And so as you look at the architecture, we'll get into that. I think it's, it's a quality development, but it's, it's kind of a early adopter in this particular area he's gonna be reaching into. He did address or approach the neighbors to the, to the west to see if they'd be interested in selling their property. Right now, they're on hold, but even our site plan has the ability, if one day they decide to sell, if Mr. Burns is able to acquire the property, to stub into that particular area and, and continue on with the townhome style that Brian's trying to get done on this property. All right, Matthew, next slide. Just a note, the home that is currently on the property is the one on the center, the bottom center. It is, it's an older home. It's, it's a duplex in itself. It's in pretty bad shape. I'm not sure if Brian's done anything since that. I'm sure he's probably cleaned it out, but it was kind of a, kind of a blight on the neighborhood, unfortunately. And, and so I think it's gonna be a real, a real step up in that direction with the new architecture. Next slide, Matthew. And as I mentioned, that's kind of a little conglomeration. There's apartments that are shown on the bottom left hand corner, commercial building right down the street, again, kind of residential in scale. You know, small business kind of approaches. And then just looking down on the top corner, that, that's behind this property. And, and unfortunately, that neighborhood, it drops off pretty quick in terms of, I think you're probably mostly into rental, smaller homes, kind of dated, not the best maintained. So, so East Vine is really, I think, our street that's seen a lot of transition, at least a lot of interest, and it's gonna keep on going further south. But I did want you to see kind of the architectural character, what Brian's considering going up against. Right behind us, as far as zoning is concerned, it's RM sixteen. So it's, there's a lot of density behind this. Next slide, Matthew. So we are proposing a development with six homes, three, the front, we just call building one. Will have patios, small stoop style patios with sidewalks that address the street, the sidewalk along East Vine. We do have kind of, we, we wanted to use the buildings to screen the parking, which is kind of a theme that we've been working with lately. And, and then we'll have a rear unit called building number two. And it's important to distinguish the two buildings because, and I'll just try to explain it in plan and you'll see it in elevation. But the front of the building faces Vine is one elevation. Then the two elevations that are facing the parking lot, because that second building does have right of way facing facades, we wanted to make sure that they were enhanced from East Vine. When you look through this project and see building number two, we wanted to make sure the quality didn't drop off. So literally, the rear building, building number two, has the same facade as the back of building number one. And that's primarily because building number one has rear entry garages, building number two has front entry garages. And there is a rear elevation for building number two that's, that has patios and that kind of thing. But when you see the elevations, it's been a little confusing because you're gonna have, where there should be normally four different elevations, there are only three because the ones facing the parking lot are both the same. Hopefully that'll make sense. If you need more clarification, I'll, I'll do that when we get into elevations. We do provide a grill station area and a dog run area. One of the comments on the dog run, it's been making sure that there's sometimes a regulation that become a dog kennel, that people just leave their dogs and, you know, overnight or all day long. So that would be part of our, you know, HOA requirement, said there'll be a time limit on the dog run availability. We do have more green space in addition in the rear. So we're really not maxing out the site. We're, you know, it's a little bit narrow, but we're able to get our setbacks in and get our buffers in. But there will be some kind of common green space behind the building number two, if the, if the occupants want to use that for that purpose. All right, Matthew, so here's the elevations. This is building number one. The top elevations, what fronts Vine Street, East Vine Street, so it has a stoop landing, well articulated porches, you know, columns and brackets. Kind of has a little bit of a craftsman character in terms of, we feel like a lot of the materials that were selected would be found within the neighborhood. So we're excited about that, that we're not doing some sort of a, you know, a modern building or something super contemporary. Because that, that neighborhood, I though, it's outside of historic district, as Matthew mentioned, there's still a lot of craftsman style homes. So we want to try to reflect that in the materials we chose. As mentioned, the rear elevation is really attractive. That's where the rear entry garages are. But Brian thought that was important because as was mentioned, that's the same facade that'll be on building number two facing East Vine. You'll only see the rear, you know, the right hand portion of that facade for the most part, but we did want to make it as nice as possible. We did do a little articulation on the end of the building. We did do a little articulation on the end of the buildings, primarily adding windows, adding a little bit of an eyebrow and the gable. You know, making sure there's kind of an accentuation band across the first and second floor. Anything we could to kind of dance up and enhance the, the sides of the building. Next slide, Matthew Wood. And so here's that, you know, this is building number two, the bottom elevation is the front elevation, the top elevation is the rear elevation, there'll be a recessed kind of covered porch area. And as was mentioned from the site plan, there'll be fenced-in private backyard on the rear units. And beyond that fenced-in patio areas, yard areas will be the common area that'll be used by the whole development. Next, please. As far as overall landscaping, you know, we had to provide buffers along the side property lines as well as the rear. And we would have nice foundation planting along East Vine. And obviously the required parking slot trees to try to soften the parking zone. And then there's some existing trees on the front of East Vine, you know, I would love for us to be able to keep those if possible, just to keep that character along East Vine, we can't commit to that just because we're just not there yet from a design standpoint, but would be our ambition to, to try to preserve those trees, they're probably four or five feet off the rear of the sidewalk and it's a relatively flat site, so without committing Brian to that, I think there'd be an effort made on the design side to try to preserve those existing trees where possible. And in the back corner, on the left, I mean, on the right top corner, those trees are existing as well. It's, it's not a heavily wooded site, but the trees that are on the site are, are mature, so we'll do all we can to try to keep those guys alive through this construction process. Next, please. And so formal open space wise, paver patio with, with some benches and a grill, as well as there, the dog run is basically showing that fence detail, it is contained area. There is an image that shows the, the private patio basically fencing around the private patio, that's the wooden fence on the top. And then the PD sense, that we're showing, that's really an alternate. Brian may decide to go PVC with all the fencing. But the only thing that's kind of in question, it's really kind of how the project develops, is whether we'd install a perimeter fence on the property at the inception of the property. There's part of us that'd rather not have the fence, but there's also a part of this, it may be kind of a necessary element, you know, initially, until the neighborhood continues to move towards more of a revitalized neighborhood, we wouldn't want to people, you know, traversing across the site that are not really belonging there, so that's a little bit up for grabs, but we wanted to make sure we put it in the book, so if a fence is going to be something we install, that we don't have to go back for an amendment to the pattern book as a result of adding the perimeter fence. So with that in mind, that's really the conclusion of my presentation. Mr. Burns may want to add a few elements as well. That may be part of the public hearing, but he is available if you have any questions for him as well, thank you.
Any questions for the developer? All right, seeing none, Mr. McKnight, do we have anyone wishing to speak on this?
No problem, we didn't have anyone wish to speak on this project.
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing, council members, do you have any questions? No questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Hi.
Mr. Martin.
Hi.
Shacklet.
Hi.
Mr. Smotherman.
Hi.
Mr. Way.
Hi.
Mayor McFarland.
Hi, all right, we'll move into.
Ms. Wright, I'm sorry, Mayor. You missed, you missed me, I'm a yeah, I'm a yes.
Okay, I, I said it, but I don't know if I sound glitched out or not, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, we're going to move into item ten, ordinance twenty O zero four, amend the zoning ordinance regarding the definition of family variances, lighting fixtures at recreational fields and landscaping for stormwater management areas.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This ordinance amendment is brought to you by staff today with some areas that, that we feel need some attention. Both our legal department and our planning department collaborated on this zoning ordinance amendment. And so I'll just go over briefly the four areas that we are proposing to amend. First, the, the two areas proposed by our legal department. Mr. Ives noticed where the definition of family in our zoning ordinance, and there are different ways that family can be defined in our zoning ordinance in compliance with state and federal. What he noticed was that there was a discrepancy, and so he has proposed just a very minor change to fix the discrepancy with, with federal law. And the second thing that the legal department propose, proposes is a rewrite of our section ten of our zoning ordinance, which deals with variances. The process by which you would apply for a variance to the zoning regulations, as well as the standards by which the Board of Zoning Appeals reviews and determines whether or not to grant variances. Mr. Ives went through and found some inconsistencies throughout section ten of the zoning ordinance dealing with variances and also some inconsistencies, not inconsistencies, but just where, where it needed to be made more consistent with state law, the language in, in our, in our zoning ordinance regarding variances. And finally, the two ordinance amendments that are brought to you by the planning staff. The first one is with regards to the height of lighting fixtures for recreational fields. Our Board of Zoning Appeals, after its November meeting, directed us to, to look at this issue. They had been tasked with reviewing several, several city recreational fields that had light fixtures proposed that were in excess of, of the maximum height requirements for lighting poles. And so by their, by the nature of recreational fields, there are generally tall lighting fixtures are needed. And so each time that the city was looking to build a recreational field, they were having to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and request a variance to the maximum height of the lighting fixtures. The Board of Zoning Appeals was struggling with whether or not on the justification to grant that height variance. And so they struggled with that and directed staff after the November meeting. Please go back and amend the zoning ordinance so that we do not have to deal with this, with this issue in the future, so we have proposed language in the zoning ordinance that makes lighting fixtures at recreational fields, where recreational fields are permitted by right, up to eighty feet in height by right. And where they're permitted by special use permit, such as for institutional group assembly uses, such as recreational fields at schools or, or churches perhaps. The Board of Zoning Appeals can review the lighting fixture height as a component of the special use permit request up to a maximum of eighty feet, as opposed to having to apply the, the criteria for, for variances to those light fixture heights. Finally, last summer or last fall, our planning commission directed staff to look at our landscaping requirements for stormwater management areas. For the last ten years or so, we had had a requirement to screen stormwater management areas. The development community really did not think that that was necessary, because the feedback that they had gotten from their, from their clientele was that those were seen as open spaces and actually amenities. And not so much as we were seeing them when we wrote that ordinance, that they were functional areas that were possibly aesthetically unpleasing. So the planning commission gave us some direction to look at our landscaping requirements for stormwater management areas. So what we've done is we've generally taken away the requirement for screening and instead put in landscaping requirements that seek to enhance the natural appearance of those areas. Adding landscaping to, to make them more aesthetically pleasing, but not necessarily screening them from view. So what we feel that we've done is we have, we are enhancing them as open areas in developments, whether they're commercial or residential or industrial, as opposed to trying to screen them from view, and we think that we have, we have honored the wishes of the planning commission when they, when they told us to look at that. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this ordinance amendment at its January the eighth meeting and voted to recommend approval to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. And thank you very much.
We need to hold a public hearing on these ordinance changes. Did Mr. McKnight, Mr. Bomber, do we have anyone wishing to speak on this?
No problem, we don't have anyone wishing to speak.
Okay, all right, we'll open the public hearing. Seeing no one wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing, do we have a motion in a second? Or any discussion?
No move, Mayor.
Motion in a second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Hi.
Mr. LaLance. Mr. Martin.
Hi.
Mr. Shacklet.
Hi.
Mr. Smotherman.
Hi.
Mr. Way.
Hi.
Mayor McFarland.
Hi, Mr. Bomber, it looks like we have some public hearings we need to schedule.
Yes, sir, just a couple that the planning commission considered last Wednesday and voted to recommend their approval. There are two public hearings and we can both easily hold those public hearings in, in one evening. We would recommend a date of June fourth for those public hearings, be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we have June fourth is.
I'm moving, we scheduled public hearings for June fourth.
Second. We have a motion in a second, Ms. Wright, for June the fourth.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Hi.
Mr. LaLance.
Hi.
Mr. Martin.
Hi.
Mr. Shacklet.
Hi.
Mr. Smotherman.
Hi.
Mr. Way.
Hi.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, all right, we'll move to resolution twenty R zero nine, setting fees for small cell installation applications. The legal department has this, Mr. Tucker.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council, this is a relatively straightforward resolution. It's a resolution to adjust the fees applicable to install small cell antennas in the city. Basically, it would bring the fees charged to conformance with the state allowed maximum. In addition, it would transfer primary responsibility for processing the, these applications to install small cells from the engineering department to the planning departments. The state statute author, sets a maximum amount for small maximum amount for fees for small cell applications. The immediate effect of this resolution would be to increase the fee for the first five applications by a party from one hun, first five antennas from one hundred dollars to a hundred and ten dollars, and then it would increase the fee for each additional antenna from fifty dollars to fifty-five dollars. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Tucker?
No move.
Second. Motion in a second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Hi.
Mr. LaLance.
Hi.
Mr. Martin.
Hi.
Mr. Shacklet.
Hi.
Mr. Smotherman.
Hi.
Mr. Way.
Hi.
Mayor McFarland.
Hi, all right, we'll move into. Ms. McKnight, do we have any licenses?
We do. We do not.
Okay, I have one recommendation Michelle Thomas to replace the long servant vacancy that was, the long service issue, Ms. Judy had passed away. We are, the, the Smith family, they're in our thoughts and our prayers. But Ms., Ms. Thomas would be replacing Ms. Smith for her expiration of term for May third, twenty twenty-three. And then also I would like to reappoint Charlie Teasley, whose term will expire May third, twenty twenty. Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Hi.
Mr. LaLance.
Hi.
Mr. Martin.
Hi.
Mr. Shacklet.
Hi.
Mr. Smotherman.
Hi.
Mr. Way.
Hi.
Mayor McFarland.
Hi, do we have any statements that need to be paid?
Not tonight.
All right, any other business from staff? All right, any other business from council?
Sure is a good looking.
Drew could have joined us.
Would you like to say we stand adjourned then? Say we stand adjourned.
We stand adjourned.
All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.